All right, it's 5:31. Let's go to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February 19th, 2020, here in the boardroom. Can we start with the roll call, please, Tammy?
Jeremy Ratliff. John Smith.
Here.
Kristy Stellingworth.
Here.
Maria Volpe.
Here.
Lynda Yingling.
Here.
Nub Ashbeck.
Here.
Paul Prue.
Here.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. So all stand as we're able to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Airey Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Sample. First item on our agenda is our public comment. Just a reminder that we, as a board, set aside the first 15 minutes for speakers to be allocated up to three minutes apiece to address the board, asking if they are in a large group to designate a representative to speak. Board members may ask clarifying questions only during this time. And just a reminder that we appreciate your participation in the school board meeting this evening. The public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person, or if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you make this evening. You have been advised, we have been advised, that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute privilege which protects defamatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears a personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period of a school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. We do have a couple people that provided the public comment form, and I'd like to start with Eric Vogel coming forward first.
Hi, good evening, welcome. I'm Eric Vogel, the county sheriff in Hamburg. Well, here we are again tonight, another meeting about closing Maple Grove. I'm glad that I'm not one of you sitting on the board here tonight with the tough decisions you guys have to make. There are two sides to every story, and I can understand both sides of this. I can understand both sides of the Maple Grove issue. Maple Grove Foundations' desire to keep Maple Grove open no matter what is huge. And your desire to close Maple Grove is just a small piece of the pie that the Mass School District has to address both financially and academically. I may not understand the intricacies of school funding, but I do know that the majority of Hamburg residents have a strong desire to keep Maple Grove open, even if it means detaching from the Mass District and re-attaching to Athens. Who was willing to take this? It's been only two days, we've collected over 90 signatures on petition to detach from Merrill and attach to Athens. This is without collecting signatures from current parents of Maple Grove students. The Merrill School Board has an opportunity tonight to make the choice to detach Hamburg and in return to receive compensation for the building and the properties of Maple Grove. If the board chooses not to do this, Hamburg residents will pursue detachment by petition by the next deadline. Detaching by petition under Wisconsin statute 117 dot 12 moves the Maple Grove property and buildings to the new school district, in which case to Athens without compensation. Because of this, there is benefit to the district and the board to take action. Now, I believe you guys have copies of the petition so far. Again, with only two days of work, as well as the map of Hamburg, with all of those people we know so far are in favor of detaching from Merrill. The Pink Properties are those who think a lot will be in favor. And actually, one of the owners of the Pink Property did sign a petition this weekend. So please make the decision to let Maple Grove leave the district and join Athens School District. This would be a win-win situation for both sides of this issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Any clarifying questions for Mr. Vogel? Thanks for your time. Next, we have a public comment from Tricia Lazar from Title I Reading Program.
During the Curriculum and Technology and Pupil Services Committee on February 12th, the reading intervention program, also known as Title I, which is contracted by a consortium, was suggested to be cut and redesigned to shift from Title I, which is one-on-one support, to a group support. The three examples shared were how students were not successful, which I can't believe to be true. My child now loves reading because of this program. There were no comparisons on how many succeeded, hence me coming forth to take it. From what I found, there are currently seven with Title I reading recovery teachers currently in the district who will likely be directly impacted. There's confusion if it was been saved by, which is yet another red flag. Title I was a phenomenal program, working directly with students, helping them directly and their families with the resources to support their children. I can't imagine trying to have these students grouped together when they are all so special with that in need in their own way. I suggest fully enough in getting better information before doing away with this wonderful program. Check for success that is not only those who did, but back to families and staff too or anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Tricia. Any clarifying questions? Right? Next on the agenda this evening, we do have some recognition. First of all, the board would like to recognize Tricia Dieter, who was appointed as the National Association of Elementary School Principals, state representative in conjunction with her role as president of AWSA, AWSA, and will be the Wisconsin representative in attending the 2020 Capitol Hill Day on Wednesday, March 25th. Thank you, Tricia, and make us proud. Anything you would like to add about that role that you'll be?
Well, this is outside of my comfort zone, definitely, as I'm actually in the political world of education. Really, my role with AWSA has opened a lot of doors, and I've been able to network with leaders across the country, so I'm really excited to take this step.
Awesome. The board also would like to recognize one other individual. If you have or haven't noticed, in the volume 24 for the February 2020 edition of Wasbo's bimonthly newsletter, Taking Care of Business, Dale Bergman was featured in the article Four Views on Funding Facilities. Thank you, and a way to represent MAPS, Dale.
I'll smile, it's a happy moment.
Anything you would like to share? There are great things we are able to read there yet, Dale?
Yeah, Wasbo reached out to me, their board directors selected new facility managers from the state of 400 schools, or which older schools are part of that membership, and just wanted a view from our perspective on some struggles we face with, you know, lack of funding and how we do approach our maintenance and restore your license. So it's an honor to be selected to have this perspective for us and your taxpayers up here in Merrill. Absolutely. Excellent, Dale, thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is our student Board of Education representative reports. We have Levi and Dala here this evening. You guys can choose who will give us the update first.
Winterfest is a day for students and teachers to take a break from school and be able to have some fun doing different activities. This has been going on for lots of years, and a lot of people look forward to it. Some of the different activities include movies, bowling, and skating. This year, due to cold weather, the Winterfest was moved from February 27th, so we still have some things to look forward to. On February 18th, all of the juniors signed up for the ACT, and they'll be taking it on March 3rd. All the students have lots of opportunities to practice and prepare, and the last test will be next Wednesday, and so far, there have been students at all of the practices. People who would like to retake the ACT will also be able to retake a specific area of the test instead of the whole thing. And both the band and choir have been doing lots of different things this year. Both have been preparing for solo ensemble, where different people prepare and perform pieces for judges. And they've also been preparing and fundraising for their trip to New York. While they're there, they'll be able to see a Broadway show, perform on the USS Intrepid, and do other things around the city. It promises to be an eventful trip for both the band and choir.
To celebrate Valentine's Day, the vocal jays presented singing Valentines to the lucky students and staff who received them. If someone brought you a singing Valentine, the vocal jay would come into your class, circle around you, and sing two love songs and read you a poem. You also received a card and a chocolate rose. It's FFA week, and to celebrate, there are dress-up themes and lunch activities each day. Dress-up themes are blue and gold, favorite animal, Plano Day, and FFA T-shirt Day. The lunch activities are cheese tasting, milk chug, cornhole, and the minute-to-win games. Boys' basketball is doing well this year. Their next game is at home on Friday against UC Everest, and it's raffled late night, so there's different baskets with different stuff, and it's really fun. The girls' basketball team has their last regular season game tomorrow at Everest, and playoffs start next Tuesday. And the wrestling team's record is eight and eight, and they have been competing in many wins this season. And that's all.
Excellent. Thanks, Levi, Bella. Any questions for our student board reps this evening? If I heard right, the wrestlers went and advanced four from regionals to sectionals. Is that correct, Mr. Murray?
One champion is active early, one champion is advanced four.
Excellent. So good luck to the completion of all our winter sports, and hopefully, we can advance some wrestlers to the state. Next on our agenda will be administrative reports, so I'll turn that over to Dr. Sample.
Thanks, Kevin. We start with Glenda Ojinski's report on professional development. Just an update, I know that this was heard at CTP as well. Teachers engaged in a illuminate DNA training, data and assessment training. It's part of the Fast Bridge Benchmark, as you can see in her description. January 13th, and all elementary buildings met together at Kate Goodrich analyzing student data with the recent Data Leadership Academy. We've been spending an awful lot of time with our student achievement data and really crunching those numbers and coming up with the strategies to move things in the right direction. You can also see the book study for grades PK through eight, How the Brain Learns to Read, and so that's our focus on, continued focus on literacy. Any questions about what our teachers have been doing from a professional development standpoint recently? Okay, next is Karen Baker, Pupil Services Director. It's her second Friday, it's the second Friday in January enrollment for student numbers. You can see those numbers there in the chart. Several revisions on that, as is always the case, because we have students moving, and every student has an ID number, and they have to be tagged in some district in the state or out of state. So this appears to be fairly final at this point for our January, second Friday in January You see Pine Rivers Monthly Report, description of their ASR's report, as well as the MAPS ASR's report, as reported by Jill Seaman. Questions for Jill? Eddie provided a fairly lengthy report, just summarizing some of the things that have been going on with the feedback from supervisors regarding educator effectiveness, the alt feedback presentation, things like that. Gave you an idea of some of the job posting timelines which we'll be facing. We're coming up on hiring season here shortly. Fall coach evaluations, athletic coaches and activity coaches, HSA contributions, some information there, and as well as the benefit education group with M3 insurance. Questions for myself or Eddie regarding his HR summary? Laura has provided the participation report, as well as her monthly newsletter for top her food service. Pretty self-explanatory. Any questions that Brian or myself can answer for Laura's report? Next is Brian's monthly status report, budget update. Any questions for Brian? Kesha's unable to be here tonight, battling what a lot of us are battling right now, with some illness. You can see her update. Really cool stuff, if you had the time to read this with what's going on with the Jefferson Pilgrim Project, some of the upgrades, the server upgrades, illuminate, which I had shared earlier with Glenda's report for the data and assessment training, DNA, recent printer, Other things, one of the things that caught my eye was the NTC eSports tour, which I wish I was young again. And then getting to know the technology team this time features Chris Ranker as one of her team members. Any questions that I can answer for Kesha? And finally, the, my superintendent's report. You can see the activities in this past month. Some of the things that really focusing on, I did the summary of our strategic financial planning meetings. Some of the things that we're working on for the future, very near future, summer school planning meeting. We also recently had an MSI day where we brought Dawn Sayer from Focus 3. She works for Tim and Brian Kite as a former curriculum director. She was able to come and give us a practitioner's viewpoint on Focus 3 as we are getting ahead of rolling this out to our students for next year. Also, the, all of the administrative leadership team had an opportunity to sit with her for a couple of hours, ask her questions. It was a, it was a very worthwhile visit. And then, of course, as you know as well, with my own dates, with my learning plan, we've been working on educator effectiveness. This is the halfway point through the year, so I've been very busy with each one of the mid-year reviews for those that I evaluate. And then that's followed by cabinet meeting topics for each one of the last four weeks. Any questions for my report? Okay. That does it for my administrative reports.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on the agenda, then, we will review committee reports. The first one on the agenda is the Finance HR Committee. We had the draft minutes provided to the board from the February 5th committee meeting. John Smith, Chair, and other members of that committee are available for any questions. Does anyone have any questions on the Finance HR Committee minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to the next committee report, which is CTP, or the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. There were draft minutes provided to the board members from the February 12th, 2020 committee meeting. Maria Volpe, Chair, and other members that were in attendance are available for questions. Does anyone have any questions for our Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee this All right. We'll move on. Currently, there is nothing under unfinished business, so we will move to the next agenda item, Board of Education business. First topic under Board of Education business is the SEASON 9 2020-2021 Shared Services Contract. We had an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Sample and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I recommend a motion to approve the SEASON 9 2020-2021 Contracted Services Agreement presented with a projected cost of $126,424.
A second. Motion by Maria, second by Jeremy. Any discussion or questions on this motion? John, go ahead.
A while back, we had a discussion that we're taking the NAC and the cost of operating NAC under our own. Is this where the came out from under the contract, or was that under a separate contract? So like, is this a reduction in years past because of our actions on NAC? Or is that under a different area?
Correct. It's under SEASON, and this is the second time we'll see that reduction by bringing NAC in-house. So this last contract reflected, the contract before this one reflected the huge drop-off when NAC came off. This one is simply a grant writer and services from the Instructional Education Material Service that dropped off. So this one's only a reduction of $9,000 less than last year. The year prior to that is where we saw a major drop-off of 289, 300,000.
Gotcha.
More than that.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have the number right up the top of my head.
Thank you, John. Any other questions on this topic or this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is approval of the Head Start Federal Grant with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman. May we have a recommended motion? Jeremy, did I?
Recommend a motion to approve the 2020-2021 Federal Head Start Grant.
Motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second? Second by Nubs. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Head Start Community Assessment with an attached topic summary sheet from Jill Seaman and a recommended motion. Paul?
Recommend a motion to approve a Head Start 2019-2020 Community Assessment.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Kristy. Any questions or discussion on this motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is in-house student-teacher administrative guidelines and policy 3120.06 adjustment. There was an attached topic summary sheet from Eddie Then and a recommended motion from the Finance HR Committee. Motion, Jeremy?
Finance HR Committee recommends approving revisions to policy 3120.06, selecting student teachers slash administrative interns, and the addition of the administrative guidelines 3120.06 effective immediately.
Motion by Jeremy. Do I have a second? Second by John. Any questions or discussions on this topic or that motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is reading intervention and discontinuation of the Reading Recovery Consortium with an attached topic summary sheet from Glenda Ojinski and a recommended motion from the Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. Do we have a motion? Maria?
I move to approve the recommendation of the CTP Committee to discontinue the Reading Recovery Consortium.
Motion by Maria.
Second.
Second by Jeremy. Any questions or discussion on this motion or this topic?
I have a couple of questions. I missed the meeting the other night.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Glenda to come up before you.
I apologize for that. And maybe just a couple of questions to make others maybe feel a little bit better on some of the reasonings behind it.
Go ahead, Glenda, whenever you're ready. Glenda, say.
I guess the reading portion of our whole district is a, you know, it was very, very important to me. So the way it sounds is that they're gonna be going into a group study for reading, not one-on-one.
So what we're gonna be doing is instead of using recovery, they will be doing a small group of three. It could be one-on-one, it could be in the classroom with a group of five.
So it is potentially that if somebody's having problems more in that group study, that they're gonna pull them to do that one-on-one, and it's gonna reach?
So, so we will be able to serve more students, because right now, reading recovery is only for first grade. So we're repurposing people to be able to meet more students needs.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. That was the gist of my understanding of it the last time we were talking, prior to this meeting, but I'm glad it's gonna reach more students, because reading in the district is struggling, and there are a lot more kids besides just in our first grade group that do need that additional time and help, you know, even with, you know, middle school, high school, and you see that problem as well. So I just wanted to kind of just loop it into a conversation, hopefully, so more people can understand.
So yeah, we're still gonna have this thing, number of reading teachers, or just if you have a group access.
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Any other board members have questions for Glenda while she's up at the table?
Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Seeing no other hands raised for questions, we do have a motion. So all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Our next item on our agenda is State Education Convention Review. What I had asked is, being that myself attended that, I've asked everybody, when they go to other conferences, to talk about what they have participated in and what was going on. So I've asked the same of that group of people, including myself. So Dr. Sample, Karen Baker, Dale Bergman, Eddie Then, and myself attended that. John, if you wanted to start by summarizing, and I can finish by going through what I attended and what I saw, and if Karen, Dale, or Eddie had things to add, you can segue into their attendance. This was four days, or three or four days in Milwaukee, downtown Milwaukee.
Sure. And you and I had the opportunity, by design really, to attend one of the sessions together. That was the boardroomed classroom aligning the work of superintendent and the board for student achievement. So that was out of Sun Prairie, Sun Prairie School District. Kind of shared what they do, their model, how they work together, and so we gained a lot of information there. There was a lot of very valuable vendors there, so I did have an opportunity, due to a couple of phone calls, to go out and actually visit with some vendors and have their undivided attention, rather than have them travel up here. Recent trends in total compensation modeling was one of the breakouts that I had. Very well attended, creating a safe environment for schools, of course, and then the other And then the other ones were really focused on what our primary focus is here besides safety and that's student achievement. One of the breakouts that was very helpful to me was the impact of family engagement on student achievement. Gave me some real ideas on how we can start utilizing social media, start creating family-type events, and start including the family to be more engaged, I think, just with the academic and the social-emotional success of their children. And then finally, the building community partnerships to support academic and career planning was valuable. The keynotes are always fantastic. It's nice to see the showcase of not only the music programs from other districts that were selected and invited to participate, but then it was also great to see, and we don't have it framed yet and up, but we have student artwork. Our very own Merrill High School student took second place this year, and she was a champion two years ago. And so I think we've got one more year for her, or she graduated.
She's graduated.
She's graduated, so, yeah. So it's always nice to see Merrill Area Public Schools towards the top with a ribbon hanging with all the student art exhibit and things. So I made sure that everybody around me knew that she was from Merrill. But that was kind of the highlight of the sessions that I attended. I know that I, we tried to conquer and divide, but it was important that Kevin and I attend that one session for Sun Prairie together.
Absolutely. I know you summarize things pretty well. Did Karen, Dale, or Eddie have anything to come up and add?
I'm sure they would love to.
I have kind of looks on their faces. Excuse me.
So I always like to go to the convention and network with contractors, architects, and take on the facility stuff down there. So some of the things that I talked about with people was school facility health, and it's impacting student learning. I looked at things concerning transition to flexible learning environments, as well as doing comprehensive facility studies and stuff like that. Those are put on by districts such as the Cross, Oskos, Chippewaian Falls. So O'Clare did some stuff, so stuff all around the state, we did perspectives from different districts. And I like to talk to those facility managers, just kind of outside the sessions as well and get their viewpoints on how they may overcome some obstacles that they have, which is years of doing that is probably what invited me to the table to write the article in that publication. So it's a very good networking opportunity for us to bring some ideas back here that maybe we don't get to explore too. I feel it's very valuable for that part of it.
I attended pupil service type sessions this year. One of the sessions that I went to was on bathing, and that is something that we've been needing between the high school and middle school to address as well as using our community partners with that. And that was, it was very informative to hear what other schools are doing, but I think the biggest takeaway for me in that particular session was how we definitely have a problem and how the community has embraced working with the school and just even what the community has done. The district that was presenting, they were just starting out, and it was really down to exactly what is bathing, what are tools that I use for bathing, how is it tied within clothing and that type of thing, and just how much local county has done with their, for example, their bedroom display that has been both at the middle school and the high school, where you actually go into an area and try to identify the different things in a room. And that was something these schools were just looking at. I also went to a mental health collaboration, and that was a panel discussion talking about how to bring in school-based mental health services into a school district. And again, it really, it was affirming for us as this district to know that that is something that we have started and we have networked with, and these schools that were presenting were a lot bigger districts who had a lot more resources than we have here in Harrell. So that was very interesting. Talking about a relationship matter was just with the SEO, social-emotional learning. And as I've reported, we have a district SEO committee, and we've done research with the PBIS committee, which is the positive engagement intervention strategies to develop an SEO program for the district. And probably one of the most interesting was when I went to on sex trafficking, which we all know is a concern, and listening to an Appleton police officer and a county person talking about what to look for in the schools and different cases that they've had. And I think that really piggybacks very nicely with the human trafficking presentation that will become upcoming at this school.
Thank you, Karen. I think Eddie's gonna come up also, we can ask some questions. So don't go too far, Karen or Dale, because I saw some, you said questions, a couple of hands went up, so don't. Thank you. Eddie?
Yes, I just wanted to talk to the camera and whatnot, but. But I was really quick that I attended. I've gone to the state convention the last couple of years, and I find it very valuable. I think that they do some things that are not incredibly high level because they've got a wide variety in terms of audience, but I do value a lot of the things that come out in the sessions that other districts share that are there doing, going through. One of the sessions I sat in in particular was bullying prevention. Marty Malloy is a representative from M3, who's one of the rural crews that we work with, just talked about not only some of the things that he covers in the CSRM training, which is a certified school risk manager certification process, but some of the things that he sees recently going on in schools and things that they try to prevent and handle and just ultimately make it a safer place. It fit really nice, the fact that we're gonna be rolling out that stop it app soon. So it was a good session to sit in and just get a refresher on some of that as well, because not all those things do you deal with every day, luckily. One of the other things I sat for was WASB presentation on access to public records and personnel files. There's always a lot of interesting things when people come in looking at personnel files, whether it's their own or folks who are looking for other information and things like that. There's a lot of redacting, there's a lot of things to consider when those things come up. So it's always good to get a refresher and to, again, listen to some of those stories that districts have survived, if you will, as they go through some of those challenges. Another session from WSB on staffing roles and responsibilities. I know we've had discussions around, they wrote, for example, other things around efficiencies in the district, and part of that is when you're changing your staffing, making sure that all the Ts are crossed and the As are dotted with regards to responsibilities. And they've got some services and things, but also gave me some ideas for how we can work through some of that process depending on what scale we go through it. Holly Hoffman was one of the speakers for the WASB Breakfast Day. She was one of the finalists, not the winner, but I think she was number three, right?
She just missed top three.
Yeah, she was very close to winning one of the seasons of Survivor, but she had a very interesting message and basically, in my opinion, talked about tenacity and kind of digging deep when it gets tough and how you can move forward through some of those things. Lastly, I'm on the WASB board, so I spent some time in the WASB booth and just talking to board members a little bit who were feeling a bit with questions and things in that major school. It's always a good way to network too and talk to other districts.
Before I turn it over to questions from other board members, I'll quickly summarize my few days down there. I did head down there ahead of the administrative team. I went to a pre-convention workshop called Redesign, Redefine, and Reimagine, which was focused on college career and life readiness. So it was nice to hear some of the different ideas there instead of just trying to make all students college-ready. What are the other steps to get them, if they're going right into the workforce and career-ready or just life-ready? So that was interesting, and I think they've touched on it already, but there's really seven or eight tracks that you're separating all of the different workshops into. We've touched on human resources and facilities specifically. Karen touched on student achievement. There is some with school law. The main ones I was focused on, as Dr. Sample mentioned, would probably be more leadership, school finance, or community engagement. I was the only board member that was able to attend this year. A lot of different things going on in different occupations and different lives, so I was the delegate for our district. So that, when you see and we're addressed, one of nine here, I was one of 300 and some out of the 400 and some districts there. So when there are some discussions, there's no discussion, like some of our topics, it goes pretty quickly when someone is talking about mascots perhaps from a Native American standpoint, depending where you stand and how well you work with a particular tribe or reservation, and if you have an agreement or not. It's interesting on those discussions, while that doesn't affect our district, you get to hear both sides of something that may be more statewide than local. I also was able to attend the breakfast that Eddie talked about, the WASB Breakfast through Winter Within with Holly Hoffman. She was the last woman standing on Survivor Season 21. She talks about that decision and actually just applying when she was soon to be right around 40 years of age to go on Survivor and to say, man, I sent that in, is there really a shot that they're even gonna call me? In fact, she didn't even answer the call the first time from somewhere in Hollywood, thinking this is just a telemarketer. I, there's somebody on a casting call saying, hey, you're in the final 500, and just so you're aware, this could happen, and here are the next steps. So she had to call back and talks about, even when you get there and you're away from the family, everyone just thinks you're put there and we start filming. Well, you're actually sequestered and you're in this resort room and what's going on where you're talking to no one. All your technology is gone the whole summer that they were there. So no phones, no iPads, none of that. So when you talk about detaching from everything and disconnecting, they really got to do that. So when you can see a letter or you can get some kind of a video message that really hit them, you're just being gone three, four days and I was still able to talk to my family at night. So I couldn't imagine someone spending a summer in a foreign country, basically on the beach and in the jungle kind of setting, going through that. And the other part that was unique to me is the person she confided in, who was also on that, on that particular show for a few years at the time, was the former Cowboys head coach Jimmy Johnson. They showed that segment of who kind of talked to her. She was ready to leave the program, just said, you know, I wanna go back to my family. I don't know, I've kind of proven my point, I was here. And then he said, really? You've just begun. And this was day three, and she made it to the third to last day on the show and just talks about everything that's happened there, just from looking within herself and believing and the guidance along the way and support from family, friends, and other members of that cast and the show. Dr. Sample mentioned us going to the aligning the work of the superintendent and board for student success. I also went to the financial roles and responsibilities of school board members session, achieving effective board meetings. We went to the WASD luncheon for the Superintendent of the Year presentation. There's a couple other ones on beyond strategic planning and goal-setting, the implementation and board support for school improvement, talking about the board coming up with the whats through the committee and administration also and that collaboration of the how and utilizing all the resources there on how much you allocate toward different things. I found that enlightening. Even tonight, we had some discussion on reading proficiency. One of the sessions that I went to was improving reading proficiency, and it was subtitled, "It Takes a Village and a Lot of Time and Effort." And that's absolutely the case. So trying to improve that through CTP and board work and all the collaboration, it is important. I went to another one also on three dimensions of government, just kind of governance, kind of talking about everything. And interestingly enough, sometimes when you're in between things and you have three that you're choosing from, even though they have a great app and they have a catalog of what each one should be, I found myself on Thursday afternoon, administrative team was getting ready to come back for an MSI day that they had some professional developments. So at the end of the session, I went to one titled, "Effectively Team Up With Your Community During Good Times and Bad." I'm thinking, all right, we've had a lot of things that we've trusted our community on and they've trusted us, let's sit there and hear what they have to say. So I'm going through in my mind, probably referendum, closing schools, all of this thing, and I walk into a presentation by the Barron Area School District. And that wasn't what I, anything close to what I thought I was going to go into. They were talking about a kidnapping in their district and a double homicide. So that would probably have been more in Paul's role, but I could not imagine Dr. Sample at three in the morning getting a call from our student resource officer saying, hey, let you sleep in, last couple hours, this has been going on, we need you down to central office. And that was just the beginning. I mean, I talk about, you know, all of the different news groups coming in, not just Channel 7, 9, or 12, and the local editors and different people talking about these things, talking about how life in that area changed and how other things still needed to happen, all of the things we're talking about in the boardroom. And I'm just sitting there, their board president happened to be on the sheriff's department, so he knew a lot of procedures, although he had to wear those hats separately, what he could say in the boardroom, what he could say to the superintendent and the public. I just, I couldn't imagine, you know, like I said, I'm walking into this one-hour session thinking how I can become a better board president and maps it and thinking of all the things that we go through, yet we haven't been through that. Thank goodness. I mean, I couldn't imagine for any one of us that's a parent, a grandparent, friends and family to get that call and to go through that, let alone for the better part of how long. You're still searching for someone, a lot of volunteers coming in. At any given time, they had to turn people away, and they had 2,000 people doing grid searches at a time. They had two 12-hour shifts of over 100 law enforcement people, local, county, state, and through other federal organizations. It was, it just really brought things back to reality that while there are a lot of difficult decisions, but that was, yeah, just beyond a lot of things to me. I'm just really thankful for the safety and some of the things that we talk about. So we certainly talk about those things. We don't take those drills lightly in things we've talked about. So as was mentioned by others, I went to many other presenters that was, like I said, Barron Area School District, some with Chippewa Falls, Thorpe, just to try to hear what Verona had to say and some, you know, even farther away school districts such as Jamesville and Marshall. But really, when I left, I kept coming back to the Barron story and thinking how, what I was going to take away and what I really did. I mean, that was a whole different segment. And keynote speakers are one thing, and then listening to Governor Evers and Carolyn Stanford-Taylor, the state superintendent, although she's rounding out her term and is not seeking reelection, has a number of things she's still working on in that next year and a half. The last keynote speaker that you guys weren't able to hear based on professional development was Shane Feldman, and he's a youth activist. And when you look at him, he looks very, very young. In fact, he's probably 28 now and still looks to be somewhere in that 2021 range. I'm sure he gets carded everywhere he goes. Well, he formed this group when he was 21, and what he did is, if anyone's ever seen the program Undercover Boss, what he did is he took himself and went back into the school as a consultant, basically as a junior or senior in high school, a transfer. Mom and dad were coming into the area and would befriend the Levis and Bellas of the school and tried to find out and get data. school and tried to find out and get data real to report back to Mr. Murray's and Dr. Samples of the school district. But in the agreement, at the end, there had to be an assembly and everybody had to, he had to come clean. He met with all his friends first that he had made during this time, and some of these were six or eight weeks that he was there, some times it was quarters, semesters or a full school year. So he did this program for three or four years and I believe it even became an A and E mini-series or special, because at the end, I think six students did this in larger districts. But certainly going through that and understanding the impact that they had there was phenomenal just to understand some of the things and the simple gestures that happened maybe in a hallway, if it's a high five or a smile at somebody or just greeting somebody, the difference that people make if it's a fellow student or if it is an educator or an administrator, just knowing what that means to people. And sometimes you take that for granted that, you know, someone may be having a bad day and just that smile really makes a difference. And that was quite the way to end, besides having, as you mentioned, Dr. Sample, there's always either a vocal performance or a musical performance on stage before all of the speakers, so certainly a lot of great things that way. So hopefully next year, other board members can attend and get to experience some of that and bring back more to the district. Now, since we did have some hands up, I would ask who had questions on state conventions so we can answer those.
I have no frickin' clue.
We gotta get you a pen and write some things down. Of all people, not having a pen, Jeremy. Christie, go ahead.
I'll hang my head in shame.
What is the Stop It App?
The Stop It App is something that we had talked about a while back in the fall, and it got delayed a little bit because we were reviewing that anti-grasp policy at committee level for quite some time. And it was good and we came through a lot of different changes and things in the policy. You guys recently approved that and it's in the process of going forward to, oh my goodness. What's the name of the policy?
Sorry. It only takes some very time to get it uploaded, but long story short, we're going to establish when the Stop It App gets put in place, it's basically an online reporting tool that's anonymous and we're gonna try it with the adults in the building. As often as these things happen with students, there are also workplace disagreements and things with adults and concerns that come up, so this will give them a way to report some of those things. We saw the iron round some of the details, but if that policy is completed, we can do that. And it is basically a direct to some of those workplace bullying issues and things like that, so.
It's more directed to the staff?
It's gonna start with the staff and then potential plan for future students. One of the challenges with it is being anonymous and as an HR director, for example, or in Karen's case, is people services, you just need to report some of those things. You can be anonymous, but at the same time, to take a certain level of action, you've gotta have some names and some information, so it'll be interesting to see how it gets utilized and to what level people are willing to report.
Crime Stoppers has been a very good program and they offer rewards, but crimes, that is the difference between like the Stop It App and Crime Stoppers. Crime Stoppers, you'd know there's some anonymity, you know, from what I understand, if I always successfully reported something and I got a fifty-dollar reward, I'm given a number, I go to the bank, I give them my number and I get the reward. This is completely anonymous, so we're gonna have to circle some policies around this because it's difficult to know that something might be happening but not have any names and so that's some of the bugs we're gonna work out. But we still think it's a very, very valuable app and it's something that's needed.
Thanks, Christie. Jeremy?
Are there any opportunities for SROs at the convention or do they have kind of their own similar organization that they attend on an annual basis?
They have SRO trainings and things. At this convention, I think that there will be several things, especially when it comes to the bullying, the student safety, and they look through, they look at things through different eyes too. And so I think that their trainings are probably more relevant for police officers.
But then we have anything at the education convention for SROs?
Not for SROs, correct. Another thing I failed to mention too is there were some obligations as well. I know that Dale worked a booth with his organization, Eddie spent some time there, you did legislative, I had the large district caucus, which I've never, I've always been present there because we have the eyes and ears and we get to hear a lot of things that are coming out of Madison with our lobbyist, John Forster. And so, you know, it's also nice, we're probably one of the smaller districts to be at the large district caucus, so I'm sitting there with Milwaukee, Green Bay, Madison, and so it's good to hear what's going on, especially in the southern part of the state, because a lot of times what happens in the southern part of the state starts coming up towards the north. And so it's a nice time to get legislative updates, know what we're gonna be, you know, supporting and what may, may not make it through the Capitol, so that kept me, I think, out of two sessions and I know yours was most of the evening early on, so, but it's a nice, it's a nice commitment and it's nice to be invited to those and get it firsthand.
Any other questions from board members? All right. Thanks, everyone, for the updates. Hopefully, if you have any other questions, certainly can answer them separately later, but let's move on to the next item on our agenda this evening. It's the master's facilities plan from both from a facilities and financial perspective. We have some updates, highlights and some scheduling discussion for the master facilities plan, so without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Sample for some updates.
Yeah, and if Dave could come up, we'll gladly show where we're at so far. This is not the district or master facilities plan, is not to be confused with the strategic plan that we've been meeting on weekly. And either Dale or myself, as the project managers, can answer any questions regarding timelines, what we've got so far and any direction that the board may want to give us as far as what you would like to see and when. And unfortunately, it's gonna have to be only on this one, sorry.
All right, so we'll be focused over here.
I can still see it from here.
Wish I was good singing Japanese music. All right, back in December, under Latin, our facilities committee in December presented this generic timeline, and then in January, the board meeting, we updated it with dates to it and it's recently been updated to things that have been completed as well. So I have completed initial needs assessment in each building, I met with all building principals and just talked about what their needs were from a curricular and a facility standpoint, in their opinions. And then ongoing things with school needs assessments, which I have a link to that here, that's where these things were all compiled, like when I met with Amy and Alex and Kate Goodrich, we took a bunch of notes from things and I've been a little busy compiling these things into a master document over the last month and a half or so.
Can I ask one question? Sorry, can we get a copy of this? Because I don't think that's linked to the agenda.
It isn't linked to the agenda, it was linked in the January board meeting.
That was linked to, was that linked as a PDF or is that linked as a live document? So the progress that's since January to right now, you gotta see some of that for the first time.
Right, so could you get a copy of the updated?
Yep.
Thank you.
Then through all those needs assessments, I also had met with the high school and middle school, y'all, those I don't have a link to yet, but I do have the notes from them that I have to update that. Right now, I'm in the midst of compiling some of that data and doing my physical condition report, so I'm looking at mechanical systems, ecosystems, et cetera, throughout the district. And that goes on through this same timeline that you've seen before, we have all these other needs. With the dates that I've had, Jennifer, my assistant's been very good at being the watchdog, making sure that these timelines have been suggested. And through that, then, this is part of my facility report, I've got about a hundred and some pages on this thing, I gave that to, I don't know if we're here again, a hundred and nine pages, which I took the study that Somerville, the physical assessment that Somerville did in 2012, and I've been updating it to the things that we've improved since then and things that have changed since then, so I'm working this document, updating that as well. And the big prize is the scenarios that we came up with through meeting with our strategic planning, with Brian and Linda, we basically had, there's five scenarios. One, status quo, two is an early childhood model, three is what we call a K-three model, four is a four K to two model, and the fifth option is a four K to five model. And the columns that you see highlighted in there right now, these sections here, is stuff that I've gotten, from the second Friday enrollment, and that we're developing the sections to those scenarios and it's, I'm just getting all charted on there so that when we meet during our strategic planning sessions and me with Brian and Linda on the curricular and financial side, we can start determining, do we have the physical space? Do we not have the physical space? Are we staying true to our section sizes that we established in the smarter school spending framework and those such things? So right now, it's just a lot of data compilation and putting things in there. I've got several different charts for different scenarios and I'm about halfway done with that at this very point, so it's kind of where we're at with regards to the facilities perspective.
There's four scenarios, but within those four, there was enough difference to say that there are four scenarios. One is existing and then there's four additional. So there is such a thing, we're not locked into four and it's not that all four would work. There's different scenarios within each one of those, different variations that can be had, but it was important that we created only four so that we could start pinpointing some of these numbers to draw an illustration really of what we're looking at with each one of those. I anticipate that of those four scenarios, at some point or another, I'm gonna recommend two, the administrative team would recognize or recommend two of the four. It doesn't mean that the board can't say, "I'm gonna take three or I'm gonna take four," but you need to clearly see the differences between each one of those. Some are more student-friendly, some are more budget-friendly, of course. There's a lot of variables that go in with that, but for just the sake of scaling, we went with four right now.
So I was just looking at the district timeline that we got at the January board meeting that you're talking about, and some of the links don't actually give us options to even open or view some of it. So I guess in the future, going forward, if we can have some of this before we come to the meeting so that if we have questions, we can review it and say, "Hey, we have a question because now we're getting this right now and it's kind of a lot to take in during your full board meeting." So I would like to see this, if it's getting updated, you know, give us an updated sheet so we can look it over and have questions either prior to the meeting or during the meeting. It makes it a little bit easier, or on myself anyways.
Sure, and not all the links will work right now because some of those things haven't been completed. And anytime we bring it here, we want it to be dated, time stamped as a PDF for that moment, and so then you can see the differences between, but yeah, we can.
It just makes it, I mean, a little bit easier because with all the information that we're being given right now.
Sure.
Our intent was to give updates at the facilities committee meeting for this stuff and now we go on to every other month, facilities meetings, and there was a request by the board to just give a general update where we're at, so I apologize for.
No, I mean, and we had that at the facilities meeting. It just, I mean, from my perspective, to see it before it comes here, it's a little bit more easier, especially to understand numbers and whatever else we're being, you know, all these different options to kind of come with a full head of questions and stuff, but.
This is a lot of compilation of several different level meetings from CTP, from finance, from, I'm just calling departments, so.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Work on it every day and spend a great deal of time on it every day, so it's always live information that's happening, so that my intent, like you said, was to bring a snapshot of this again to the facilities committee in March, a couple of weeks, so we could have some more in-depth discussion with the committee members and anybody else in attendance here that, to prevent, you know, long drawn out board meetings.
Well, I got, I got one more thing, I guess, to prevent long drawn out meetings when we're looking at some big, big issues coming up and all the financial portion of it, I guess if the meeting's gonna get drawn out, I would like to see the documentation, you know, prior to the meeting because, prior to, you know, coming here. That way I'm better prepared and understand things a little bit more as well. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Jeremy, I see your hand up.
So I was one of the board members that requested to see this, I appreciate this, especially given, one of the reasons why I asked for this, I think other board members may have asked also, but one reason I wanted an update is this is a big part of the referendum and there's been, you know, a lot of questions in the community about, well, the referendum was mentioned, or facilities mentioned the referendum, where do we stand with that? And so this helps me at least take some information back and help, at least try and answer some of those questions. So I guess my next question is, what is the plan for the summer? What are some of the big projects or the, I guess, the bigger projects that you have in mind or you have your crosshairs on?
Well, from a facilities project thing goes, remember, we did a borrowing to use our referendum dollars with the facility improvements.
Right.
All in the first year, so we don't have a lot of big things happening this time so, we'll continue our routine capital maintenance, like Gruene and Asshole, we're creating some small camp up here and stuff, but the big ticket items we did.
They're on the way.
All upfront, because we borrowed the money, we borrowed a million dollars of our, which was allocated from our referendum money in year one, and we're using the two fifty each year to pay that back, and that was due, that was, so we had more bank for a buck there, right upfront, we get things done. So this, this year will be routine projects, which you'll see in April, I think we're going to send those projects to the board for approval or information.
Okay, thanks again, Dale, I appreciate this.
John?
I have some questions and I do have some comments in regards to finance from the treasurer's perspective, and I guess I'd ask that Brian, if that could come up, because he has some, he has a timeline that I'd like to throw up on the board so that we can all be on the same page in regards to what we're facing specifically about the referendum. So if you could put the calendar that I sent you up on the board. This is our three-year calendar that we face and obviously this discussion began about eighteen months ago, or sixteen months ago in December of 2018, because we passed the referendum in eighteen. And it was within that year, I remember being in a boardroom where we said, "We need a master facility plan on how to rescale and resize the district." Because it was evident at that time, our district is too big for the revenue stream that we have. Okay? And over the next four-year period, our revenue stream has declined five hundred thousand a year because we have a. because we have an average of 50 kids that, um, have naturally left the district due to population decline or for whatever reason. So one of my biggest concerns has to do with that this is the month and this is the last point we can execute the plan, adopt the plan, review the plan and rescale the entire district. So we have 18 months to redesign Merrill Area Public School District before the April refer, uh, referendum operated. Okay? Now, the next level of my concern is, is when we went for the original referendum, we faced 1.5 million dollars worth of deficit. Okay? And then we tagged on to that, um, maintenance and we have a new FabLab initiative and everybody got behind it. It was great, but it's 4.5 now. And so for me, if, if we did our job and we rescaled the district over the last four years, when we pull away 2.5 million at the very end, the negative deficit, if we had done our jobs properly over four years, should be 2.5 million. It's not, it's 4.5 million. And it makes total sense because we lost $500,000 of revenue over four years. There goes the 2 million. So really, the reason for my concerns is if we wait until, say, June to make a decision, subtract four months from 18, and that's how many months we have left to rescale the entire district. And we have to do this ahead of the referendum because if I was a voter, I'd say you had four years to rescale the district and you didn't get it accomplished, I would venture a guess I wouldn't vote for it. So it's not so much at this point whether or not, in my mind, the district needs rescaling. That's as, as clear as it possibly can be. But my anxiety, and I'm talking to you now as a treasurer, going on the record, is, is this is not anything we can overcome. You will not be able to go to the public for a $30 million operating referendum. So you need to get this, we need to get this in control before the referendum date. And we have 18 months to do it. We had 48 months to do it. And so I am trying to set the tone that we're running out of time. And in the finance world, we use terms like fiscal cliff to scare people. That seems like one. Now, there, you've been, you've seen presentations before where they say, don't read too much into this, we don't know what the future holds. That's what the story always goes to big, long-term projections. One, I've watched projections for the last three years, plus looking back in history, and Brian Dasher's projections are pretty accurate. Like I, he was off by a couple thousand bucks one year on 38 million. Any per, per pupil increases by the state legislature is going to get gobbled right up by salaries because we've already defined that. So we can't depend on receiving more funds. We have to resize the district with the revenue stream we have. And so what I'm really asking of the administration is what date do we start executing the plan? Because in addition to this, we have to plan for a referendum, which is between that date and that top date. So we've got tons to do and we're running out of time. So tonight, what I'd like to figure out is when's the start date? And then if we can get everybody on the same page to acknowledge that we are just going to shift kids from the buildings they're in now into the existing buildings under different classroom type settings. Because we certainly can't go and say, we're going to shut this building down, tear it down and build a new one. That'll never fly either. And so if the goal is, is to realign and redistrict, resize the district, I don't see as of really having a need to worry about having a plan. The plan's right in front of us. We're going to close Jefferson, we're going to close Maple Grove, and we're going to shift five, four and five to the middle school, and we're going to shift eighth to the high school. And we can talk for months about it, but I almost guarantee you that when we get right about here, that'll be our only option. So if that is what we're facing, I just want to make sure a facility aspect and the finance aspect, and most importantly, the curricular aspect, because curriculum should be telling us what this looks like. We need to hurry up and have those discussions and get it going. So I get off my soapbox now, but I'm on the record, we're duly warned. This is what we face.
Nubs, go ahead.
To follow up on John's, um, I did a little homework and I'd be willing to share it with the rest of the board if they like it and take it for what it's worth. It's just numbers, not decisions. Um, I looked at the Somerville report from 2011. They list the capacity of all the schools in the district and they listed the number of kids in each school. So I took last year's number of kids and compared, made a column of that in each school. So I have that on a sheet of paper. I'd like, I'd be willing to make a copy to anybody that would like to, to see it. You'll see there's 432 less kids from 2011 to 2018. All right? And each school has had a decline, you know, except I think Maple Grove is about the same. Um, but the rest of the schools all have a decline. So if you want to look at just numbers, um, I have them for anybody that wants one.
Thank you. And I think the quick math is, is there's 400 empty chairs at high school.
400.
400 empty chairs.
Right. Actually, and, and that's exactly what it comes out to because, uh, Mr. Murray said he had 400 empty locker. According to the two reports, it's about 400.
Right.
And there's a, a big difference at the middle school, although some of the space, I guess, has been used for other stuff. But there's a huge amount of, of difference between capacity in 2011 and present. There's like 1,200 capacity in 2011 and we have 450 kids there now. So that's, you know, 700 empty. And I'm sure some of the room was used for, you know, shops or, or whatever, but there's got to be a lot of room there.
Absolutely.
But, but anyway, I'm not saying we should make a decision. I just have some numbers for everybody to look at if they sold like a copy.
Well, that one form that we looked at from Karen Baker's report for the count indicated that there's 341 fourth and fifth graders in the entire district.
Right.
There's 400 empty seats at the high school, which means that all you have to do is shift in this direction, uh, and we have the capacity to save money. Um, but we're running out of time to do that.
I saw Jeremy's hand up as well.
Yeah, um, I guess I'm just trying to wrap my head around this. I don't disagree with anything you're saying. I mean, it's, that's a pretty hefty paddle kick you just tossed overboard there at the presentation. Logistically, I don't under, I just can't wrap my head around how that's even possible in that narrow timeframe to, there's a lot of moving parts that you just dropped in your presentation with the, the movement and the school closures. And you project, logistically, that can all, realistically, that can happen in 18 months.
It has to.
Well, I get that, but there's a big difference between realistically, between it has to and it can. So you mean to say that this can realistically happen and it can occur in the course of 18 months?
To specifically address your question, the board was told it could happen within four months at the, um, beginning in May of 2018 if the vote was known. So.
You've got a heck of a better memory than I do.
That was going to be the failed referendum though. If Maple Grove and Jefferson was going to close and we would not know until April. And the only thing that that plan would be missing rather than this plan is a communication plan and community involvement. But the community was already involved to know that if there wasn't no referendum, that that's what was going to happen. So that kind of was the community.
So with that being said, I guess my question is more open-ended, not more toward John, just in general, maybe in this room, you know, is this can happen in 18 months that we can accomplish everything you just mentioned?
Yes. A lot of this work is, is being done. I mean, we're trying to show as much evidence as we can. We've had this conversation since prepping for the referendum with numbers and building sizes and everything else, all the way back to Somerville. So yes, absolutely.
So I guess my question would be from the financial side, when are, when is Brian going to be able to use the new plan to project finances so that we don't have to post a 4.5 million deficit? Because that's, ties back into his work product.
Right.
I mean, what's the, what's the point where the new reality is injected into the projections and Glenda's curriculum's new reality? What date is that? That's really what I, what I need to hear to be assured that we're going to make it in 18 months.
I think the last date on, on what we're working on right now, and some of this work doesn't have to happen, although Brian's going to need that for numbers anyways, uh, is to finish that part of it, March, April was the last dates that I saw on that part. Um, that's going to be coordinated, of course, with Glenda and everything else for, for that. But then it's going to be the other things that are just as crucial. Okay, what are we doing with the properties? What are we, you know what I mean? There's, there's those parts of it as well. But as far as a plan with the grades and the buildings and the sections, yeah, that's next month or two. We've got enough information right now within our report. I think that Brian's still going to have realized savings or possible realized costs if it comes down to any remodeling, any of those finer things that we're working on when it comes to the, the guts, the inner workings of those buildings and what they're going to need.
Right.
So that's, that's the part that I know is bogging down Dale right now is, is coming up with, with his Akita box. I mean, he's got so many guys, so many man-hours and just the maintenance of what we have left then once that decision is made. That can be the, those can be the pieces that are picked up later. The big part is, of course, going to be any movement and building utilization.
So how far along are we with, we have Dale's piece, which he was able to demonstrate. We have Brian's piece, which he's able to demonstrate. How long, far along are we with the curricular piece? So does, do we?
It's not going to change curricular as much as it's going to change personnel and go over into Ed's piece.
Right.
Right. And so that's going to be, that's going to blend in with what Brian's going to need as well. Because that's going to be what we bring you then. We bring you, here's our four plans, here's the costs associated, here's the two or one plan that, that I would recommend, knowing that you guys have full option to go with any of the four plans, but as much information as we can give you guys, the better decision you're going to make with whatever structure that may be.
So we're looking at April for comprehensive curricular, facility and financial plan to rescale the district? Is that what I'm hearing?
April's going to be a little soon, I think, for the personnel aspect of it. I think we can be very close though.
Me? I just want a hard number.
Right. Um, before summer, before this school year is over, we can start having those conversations. But we need to, we need some direction too. I mean, you mentioned one model, that's one of the four, one of the two that I'm favoring as, as a recommendation to the board. I mean, is that, if that's the only model, we can put all of our marbles right into that, but I'm not going to get out in front of the board.
While we ponder that for a quick moment, Brett did have his hand up too. I've been giving John the floor here, but I want Brett to have his question answered as well.
I think it kind of just goes, um, and I had a couple of the questions I had are already answered, so, um, we have, I just kind of negated my memory until, uh, obviously an email brought this up while actually last finance HR meeting kind of started that conversation. So if this is being done by, let's say, May 31st, um, with possibly two plans presented forward, um, we have 15 months-ish, 14 months, um, till the drop dead date that you'd want it done by. But when, I was just coming in at this time, how long was the actual referendum planning prior to the 5th of April of 2022, which was the next one? How, that was probably a six, eight-month process?
Started in, wasn't it, we started in 16 when we had the.
A couple of year-long process.
It was a few, I mean, because we had that big.
A half a year, I would say, of, of hard work. Yes.
So if we were to say six months of going to town on a referendum, if we back up from April 5th of 2022, um, you know, we're looking at September-ish, August 2021 that you want to start planning the actual referendum that you want to send forward. So where's the implementation process of either of these plans? It has to be almost, is it September of 2022? Is it, uh, where does that fall into place? Because you can't, you can't go out and ask for more money if we don't know what we're doing or know how to answer maybe a rebuttal question of you didn't do any, you didn't, you didn't comp, you didn't do what you said you're going to do or 4.5 million in the hole. How can we, how can we plan for something if we don't know when it's going to be implemented? So like if this gets dragged on through May, but it's going to take another year to implement it, how can you plan for, how can we plan for a referendum in 2022 if we don't know what we're implementing or it's not being implemented after a referendum?
Point of order, is this, are we getting a little off topic? Because this isn't on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure, make sure we're.
It's on the agenda.
We're doing this safely. Referendum discussion is not on the agenda. Master.
I asked for a clarification on the timeline.
Oh, no, I'm just making sure that we're not getting in the muddy water here by going off, going off track.
So from a financial perspective, is tied to a referendum was the link?
Okay.
And I was told that wasn't muddy water, that that could be covered under that. That's why we didn't just add from a facilities perspective and ask Dale, we asked Brian to join in so we could go down a particular road of referendum and financial budgetary planning. That was the response I got, but thank you.
Just wanted to make sure.
For the board, yes. No, understand.
And Brett, if you visualize this, so going to referendum in April of 2022, correct? Let's say we start planning for that referendum in September of that school year. Because I tend to think of school years rather than calendar years. The district's already been reorganized at that point.
Okay.
That, that in September, that's where you could potentially see four through seven and at the middle school where the middle school is. So, so starting that school year.
Would be possibly the implementation of the plan that we're looking at.
Yeah, but what John's saying and, and absolutely correct is it takes time to make, I mean, that's a lot of moving parts. And so we not only have to give the board time to look at everything that we've compiled so that they make the best decision, you guys make the best decision, but then there's a lot of things that have to follow, whether it be curriculum, personnel, all of those things. There's a lot of moving parts to that. So that gives us, if it happened today, it'd be 18 months to make that move.
But in reality, you're probably talking 15 or 14 months.
Correct. Correct.
And I think.
Knowing that students are going to be in their seats at September of the referendum year.
And you're saying, Brett, that's when referendum planning starts too.
Right.
Or they're up?
No.
We started in November of 2016 and April 2018 referendum. And we, if we follow that same timeline, we start next year.
But then once the referendum was planned at that point, and that, that includes everything having to do with the referendum, but then the referendum, avoiding referendum burnout, communication, uh, surveys, all of those things really did hit the ground that fall prior to the April referendum.
So you're saying that we're starting.
With hiring and, and those things and contracting.
We, we had all the community plans we had, we laid out the, if we start, if we don't start planning until September of '21 for April of '22, it's going to be too late.
Sure.
We need to start in earnest, at least by November, January of next year.
Right.
Developing what we're going to develop for, developing what it's going to look like, developing how, what it's going to pay for. We need to start having those community conversations like we had the last time, not community conversations, but the, um, the referendum planning meetings that we had.
Right.
Um, and in reality, um, we did bring in, and, and looking at it, um, in hindsight, we probably should have started, um, some things, we should have probably brought. We should have probably brought in our communications concept earlier. We probably should have brought in school perceptions a little earlier than we did. A good, solid, especially if it's gonna be, if, if we ever look at a capital referendum, we're talking a good, solid two-year process for a capital referendum. In an operating referendum, you, you need at least a year out. You don't wanna start until, the fall is when, we had to have the survey done by the fall. And even that went on a little late for, uh, school perception, uh, comfort. And we were starting to run up a little tight on that, so I think if we're gonna work in a new operating referendum, we need to start talking about it next year.
At the latest?
At the latest.
And then to your question.
Ideally, November.
Yeah.
I don't know that, uh, the last time around, we started putting the idea, um, in November. Uh, if, uh, I think if I remember correctly, we took action in December of two thousand sixteen to develop a steering committee of sorts. And that turned into the, um, uh, community meetings that we had in January, February, March, and April. I can't remember the, but, but starting in January, we had a series of meetings, we had school perception there, and that's where we developed the priorities that we were gonna fund through the, uh, through the referendum. That's where the, um, kind of bad lab came up and, and, um, the facilities and the teacher salaries schedules and the attract and retain staff. And then we, we also then started developing that survey during those months, so that by about April, May, we had the survey done. And, uh, we were ready to go, for the most part, we've done, and then it was ready to go. We, we let it go out in October, um, ideally, we'd like to, I, I think we should move that up to about September. Get that out a little earlier than we did this last time around, um, so I, I would probably start thinking hard about it in terms of January of next year about planning stuff out and getting our ducks in the hole.
That last community conversation follow-up was, uh, was September, mid-September.
So then really, we have eight to ten months to have a plan in front of us and approve a plan to know what we're doing. Otherwise, we're really putting us in even a bigger issue.
Right, and knowing that we're still gonna be working on many, many things all at once.
Not saying it needs to be done in ten months, but we need to be.
Right.
See a plan and have it approved, probably within six at the latest.
Correct.
So seeing a plan and, you're saying end of May?
Yep, and, and to know too, we're gonna be doing a lot of things all at once. It's not, we just work on referendum and, and we're gonna be able to work on building at the same time. We're gonna have a lot of moving parts here, but yes, May is gonna give you guys an opportunity to make a decision, gives us the direction that we need to go forward.
So you're thinking we'll possibly see it on the, on the seventeenth of June, like a board, a June board meeting?
Yeah.
So we'd see it then, so that puts you at, early at least, in making a decision in July?
June or July, earliest June. Well, June for the results, correct, and then July for the decision.
Just, like, knowing how we operate, I highly doubt that a decision's gonna be made in a month. Be dragged down for two at least, just speaking off of previous experience.
We're just narrowing down by that point, and then we'll have two different options that we can work out from.
Right.
All right, I had Linda then Paul. Linda, you have a question?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, the timeline you got up here seems to be like a John Smith timeline, correct? Or, or did Mr. Brian help you create these calendars?
No, that's just me and my, my home computer.
Yeah, and it probably is gonna take us two months because you've got a lot of moving parts here besides closing schools, you've got the community that this is gonna impact. That's a big chunk of this, and if you want, you gotta do it right, because if you do it wrong, you're not gonna get a referendum to pass, no matter what we do. So, um, you know, at the beginning of, in two thousand sixteen, when we did all that, um, we did have some promises in that referendum in sixteen. And one of it was to keep two school buildings open. And now, I mean, we're in this process now, and it's a hard decision for one thing, because you're gonna uproar the community. But I wanna make sure we're gonna do it right. I don't wanna do it wrong. I don't want to, you know, uproar the community, because this is going to be a big impact, depending on what buildings we move or where the kids are gonna move. Especially if you decide, okay, we're gonna close Maple Grove, we're gonna bring those kids into town, potentially, if most of them don't leave. But then all of a sudden, you decide you wanna close Jefferson, then you're moving kids again. So if we're gonna do it, you might as well, I mean, if you're gonna close Jefferson, you might as well do it all together. Because you're not gonna wanna move all these kids multiple times, have to redistrict this whole area multiple times. I mean, there's so much that can happen, so many things that can, you know, it's a nerve-wracking thing, and my belly is doing the jiggles right now. And that's the gut going after, and the mind is going a hundred miles a minute, but I don't wanna rush this, and yes, I know we need to get it done, but I wanna make sure we're gonna do it right. And, I mean, it's, it's gonna be a hard decision, just like the last one, but, um, I just wanna make sure we get the community. Because if we tick them off, no matter if we save four point five million deficit or whatever that amount is, you're not gonna get any additional referendum from them, depending on how we handle that.
Well, from my perspective too, and I appreciate that, Linda, um, is the community gonna be more supportive of going for eight or nine or ten million dollars a year? Or can we reduce that down and do what we're fiscally responsible in, in having to do to be responsible to our taxpayers? I'd hate to go out to a choice and say, hey, if you wanna keep everything open, give us twenty million dollars a year and we can do it. That'd be great. Or do we do everything we possibly can and alleviate the tax dollar?
I just want, I mean, it's gonna be a hard decision, and this community is set in their ways, and they love their buildings, they love their little country buildings, and it's not easy. I mean, some people are looking at the numbers, yes, looking at the numbers, but we also gotta, you know, think about how is it gonna affect the rest of everybody else besides? You know, but, I mean, I think we just got a lot of work to go about, and, I mean, I'm hoping we can, it's gonna be not a two-month project, that's for sure.
All right.
That's made two cents.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Okay, Paul, coming back to Brett, Jeremy.
Okay, the only thing I'm asking is that, considering the information that we have here, can we make this an agenda item? A full-blown item every month, so that we can be updated and be shown what's happening and actually see the plan in action? Uh, I think that's, something has to be done.
Right.
So we aren't waiting until four months down the road, and all of a sudden, now the plans are here. Keep us in the loop, keep it moving.
And the only reason that wasn't scheduled on tonight's board meeting, so it, it is now, the reason it wasn't linked was because the facility meeting, we didn't have one this month. And so everything has been going through facilities and then to the board, so yeah, so we'll be in front of the board.
Maybe facilities will have to meet every month.
Or we just bring it to the board every month regardless, yeah. Yep, you're right.
Thank you.
Quick add-on.
I just wanted to add, Paul, it's also going to be on the CTP agenda, so we'll see it at that level as well.
Yeah.
All right. Brett had his question addressed. Jeremy?
Oh, I was just gonna piggyback off what Linda said, and, you know, I agree, change is hard for anybody to, to wrap their head around and accept, whether it be closing down schools or, you know, minimizing programming. But that's all part of the referendum process, you know, and that's the whole basis of referendums. Basically, present the community with options like we did before, and let them decide the option that, as a whole, is populist, which option they prefer. They prefer option A, closing down Jefferson, Maple Grove, you know, so on and so forth. They prefer option B, keeping option, keeping Maple Grove and Jefferson open, and, but then being able to fund the money to keep those buildings open. And all we can really do is we can, obviously, the sooner we start, the better. All we can really do is put our shoulders to where we already did before, put all the information out there and be one or 10% transparent about it. And whatever the community makes, we have to make sure as a board that we honor those, whatever we said in the referendum, the options, we, the paint, the picture we painted for them. No matter what happens, we have to make sure we follow through with that. And it has to be as, as detailed and as easily understood as possible. So that way, that when they make the vote, that they know that we're giving them all the information they need, and they're making a decision based on that.
Okay.
Jeremy?
One of the things to keep in mind is, this is where the referendum is. This is the beginning of the school year that would have significant changes to it. So you're not gonna go to the voters and say, would you like to keep Jefferson open? Would you like to keep fifth grade here? We are at a fiscal scenario now where this board needs to make a decision that's fiscally responsible for the district. You'll resize and rescale the district to fit within your revenue stream, which is grossly not correct right now. And then when you go to the voters, you'll give them the change that's left over. We did all these things and we're still short.
Whatever it may be, I was using that as an example.
I just wanted to make sure we're all clear that, like, we'll be, we'll be taking actions that are significant if we follow through. But it won't be on a referendum unless we had a special one, because it's, it's not referendum-type material at this point. We're too far in the game.
Okay, you can't.
I get your point, but I just didn't want you to be misled, either.
No, I was, I get, I was using those as examples. I guess my only point I'm trying to get across is hoping referendum is to put all the information out there that we have to the community. So that in a way, the community makes, use that information to make the best decision possible. They're not gonna make a decision, and then a month after referendum, you know, this happens, this happens, that they didn't, we didn't tell them it's gonna be a part of the package. That's my only point. Transparency.
All right, so one point of clarification, a question was asked about putting together this particular schedule. Brian, we use Forecast Five and other models for budgeting tools?
Is there anything that you see up there that is, is inaccurate as far as the start of the four point five million dollar deficit? Or things that we've talked about in regards to when that election day would, for possible referendum and, and talking about that, I mean?
No. Oh, yeah, the four and a half million is what we're gonna face if, if the current operating referendum is not renewed.
Correct.
And so the dates are correct and the timelines are correct, um, and, yeah, I mean, that, that.
While you may not have created that, that is something that, that all the models and things we've talked about at finance and, and HR committees and at other times, seeing projections. Those are real numbers and not like a scare number. I mean, if, if we do nothing, till then, the term like fiscal cliff and, and other scare words that we've talked about become real and, and doing nothing that whole time. All of the, all of the other options which were in the past utilized for words like if there was a no vote, becomes real.
If there's, yeah, if there's a four and a half million dollar, uh, to require a dramatic redesign of the district, I mean, it's.
Unbelievable.
Even if you eliminated every single administrator in the district, you're not gonna be close to eliminating that, that decision.
Correct.
Then we're talking about class sizes. To your point, Jeremy, you used them as examples, then it's gonna be a no vote, it's gonna be class sizes that are huge. Uh, it's gonna be programs that are cut, and it's gonna be down to core academics. Just what I'm anticipating.
Right, and I, and I think that's the goal, is to remove these major elements.
To reduce the cost.
So that it's, it's working for a full year and you can see that the world didn't come to an end. But we still have this much need in order to pay the bills under the current scenario. But I think it'd be very healthy to get it in one year so that you can work out those scenarios. I couldn't imagine implementing this on the backside of a no referendum.
No, correct. That's not the, the right way to do it, correct.
Everyone here, the information specific to dates, if someone needs something, as far as the next step, as far as what we will have as a board, or what we're requesting, or which dates?
Now, I heard that we would receive a full plan for review and adoption at the June board meeting.
Is that what I heard? Is that what everybody heard?
May thirty-first.
Yep, by the end of May, but that means it would be ready for each.
By fifty-nine PM, I will check my email.
I may be out of the area on a vacation. If you take a family, so bear with me if I don't check till early June.
They have cell service.
You know why I picked the resort I do, Brett?
They don't have cell service.
They don't have cell service.
They don't have any water, you, up there, you neither.
They got that now, it's a generator. No, just go ahead.
Just so I understand, are we only having one plan or are we having a couple of plans? Are we gonna have a plan for, if the referendum fails?
Well, we're not even to that, we're, we're talking about redistricting.
Redistricting.
We'll have multiple plans for redistricting. It's just a matter of shifting numbers at that point, and then it's gonna be personal.
And then we're gonna get like follow-ups, like Paul's been asking for two then at each board meeting?
Yep.
It will be a standing agenda item going through. I will work with Dr. Sample to have that placed on, very similar to other committees that we do have, uh, we do on facilities, as you're aware. It's going to have a placeholder as well, I believe, on CTP and Finance HR, so.
Finance is gonna discuss the shifting of grades, and I believe the principals and directors.
So how does that belong in finance? I mean, wouldn't CTP also be involved with that for the, stuff like that?
You're having.
Okay, that's all.
Any, any other questions, any other statements you'd like to make after Sample, Brian, Dale?
No, I'm, I'm good.
We've covered it.
Dale, anything?
If you have anything at this time that you want to ask as far as clarifying, as far as roles and expectations, now is a great time, because we don't meet for a month. So if there's things that, I, I know we have some committee things in between, so we can certainly talk and ask then, but I think it was, a lot to digest, as other board members had said earlier, but it, it's a discussion that has to start, as shown by this, this calendar sooner than later. And I appreciate everybody's, uh, input and, and discussion, and there's a lot of work to be done, so, thank you for that. At this point, we'll end that agenda item. Thank everyone for their participation on that. Our next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I, I'd like to ask if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda. Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion.
All right, Maria?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A through E, which includes second readings and approval of policy, uh, numbered to be determined budget, policy twenty-four thirty-one intrascholastic athletes. Policy fifty-one twenty assignment within district, policy fifty-two hundred point oh one full-time student. Policy fifty-four ten promotion placement and retention, policy fifty-four sixty-three credits from non-public schools. Policy seventy-five forty-four use of social media. Policy seventy-five forty point oh three student technology acceptable use and safety. Policy seventy-five forty point oh four student technology acceptable use and safety. Bylaw zero one zero zero definitions. Policy twenty-three forty district sponsored trips. Policy seventy-five forty technology. And policy seventy-five forty point oh two web content apps and services. The minutes of the January fifteenth, twenty twenty meeting, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling four million nine hundred seventy-eight thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. The personnel report, which is long, which includes the retirement of Lori Smith, effective at the end of twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Rick Genrick, effective August thirty-one, twenty twenty. Scott Mackin, effective at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And Donna Hepner, effective at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. The resignations of Brian Kozni, effective at the end of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And Anna Fisher, effective June thirty, twenty twenty. The hiring of the following limited-term employees. Sean Schultz, MHS baseball varsity head coach. Rob Clu, MHS baseball assistant varsity coach. Mitchell Asness, MHS baseball JV head coach. Chase Nelson, MHS baseball JV two head coach. Justin Pyon, MHS baseball assistant JV two coach. Kobe Blake, MHS baseball assistant JV two coach. Andy Plish, MHS golf varsity head coach. Rick Wallace, MHS golf assistant varsity coach. Adam Yurkovsky, MHS golf JV coach. William Bilecki, MHS soccer girls assistant varsity coach. Ann Becker, MHS softball varsity head coach. Lindsay Dosher. head coach, Lindsay Doscher, MHS softball assistant varsity coach, Ben Natski, MHS softball JV head coach, Cliff Proll, MHS softball JV assistant coach, Emily Hackendorf, MHS softball JV II head coach, Jason Wodzinski, MHS track varsity head coat, head coach, Beth Martinevich, MHS track assistant coach, Heath Seifeld, MHS track assistant coach, John Bezier, MHS track assistant coach, Christopher Hahn, MHS track assistant coach, Alex Marx, MHS track assistant coach, Isaac Bundrock, MHS track assistant coach, Lisa Hanlon, PRMS track head coach, Emily Smith, PRMS track assistant coach, Jocelyn Johns, PRMS track assistant coach, Eric Ball, PRMS track assistant coach, Ethan Schneider, PRMS track assistant coach, Chris Crew, PRMS volleyball head intramural junior Jays, Janet Wardall, PRMS volleyball assistant intramural junior Jays, Casey Holt, PRMS volleyball assistant intramural junior Jays, and Brad Connets, MHS soccer head boys JV coach, and donations of $1,567.12.
We're under strike tonight. Thank you.
Do you have a second?
Second. Second.
You're late.
I was going to ask Sammy to repeat that just to get the.
I'm sorry if I butchered anybody's name.
No, you did very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions?
I abstained from January 15th, part of anyway.
All right, so I will abstain from the hiring of Kobe Blake for Smerile High School baseball assistant JV II coach. Items for future meetings and possible actions, we've talked about that going through committees. If there's any questions on that process, certainly we'll let myself know or contact any chairs of the upcoming committee meetings, so we can go through that. We do keep a running list of requested items, and are still working on a few of those.
Can I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
There's three on here that are basically ongoing, but it looks like the dates are pretty stale. So could we either update those dates or get resolution on those? It looks like the school forest question that was tabled in August of 19 till October, so maybe resolve that one or get an update on that by the next board meeting.
We're close to that, and that'll go to school forest. I'm sorry, that will go to CTP.
Okay, and it looks like the Kids Kingdom question?
Kids Kingdom is going to be tied with facilities planning, district planning somewhat, so we'll move as quickly as we can on that. We've, we've been in discussions.
Okay, maybe we can just update the spreadsheet to make it current so it doesn't look like these are stale as it looks right now.
Sure.
And we have had some updates along the way, so if we can work together on that, Dr. Sample, so we can update that with when we have talked to the board and committees on that.
We'll take that to facilities on that one, that is our oldest one.
All right, thank you.
And the CTP on the subcommittee, and we need Finance and HR for the last one, the process for hiring coaches, and all coaches' salaries are determined. I think we've had some discussions, but if we can update all of those would be great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. We also talk on there of the board decision financial impact summary, just with the attached document there. We'll make sure we're continuing to update that as well. There's a radio schedule program tomorrow at 8:15 AM on Blue Jay 730 radio station. Dr. Sample, I will be on there recapping tonight's meeting. Future meetings include some of the committee meetings that we've already mentioned, just so everyone is aware. The Finance, HR Committee meeting will be held Wednesday, February 26 at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom. Safety Subcommittee meeting, which does meet during the day, is on Monday, March 2, 12:30 PM in the boardroom. That is a Subcommittee of Facilities. The Facilities Committee will meet next Wednesday, March 4 at 3:30 here in the boardroom. Policy Committee meeting next meets on Monday, March 9 at 4:30 PM in the boardroom. I have Maple Grove Governance Board meeting on Monday, March 9 at 6:00 PM on Maple Grove. Pine River School for Young Learners Policy Council meeting is slated for Tuesday, March 10 at 5:30 PM, out of Pine River School for Young Learners. A CTP Committee meeting, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services, will be Wednesday, March 11 at 4:30 PM here in the boardroom. Off Bridges Virtual Academy, or BBA Governance Board meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March 12 at 12:45 PM. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 18, 2020 at 5:30 PM here in the boardroom. At this time, we have a contemplate, I'm looking for a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under section 19.85, print 1, print C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, print E, deliberating or negotiation of the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specific or specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, print F.